Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I wish we had a bigger turnout. We don't. But the city did not advertise this meeting on their website. I am here by myself. There's no other commissioners, so there was no reason to advertise as a sunshine violation. I know that now, next time I do this, I'll make sure that it is up there. I'm a rookie at this. I've never done this before. I don't really know that I need to add... I was gonna just basically talk about myself, introduce myself to my electorate, the people that put me here, but they're not here, and most of you in the room already know me. So, some don't, but my name is Tom Burbank. I took office in November, and as was said back here, I've been a resident in Deltona since 1967. Dad brought us here. He had brought property from the Mackel brothers, our founders, while we were still stationed in Europe in the early 60s. And then we got stationed... We went in Kentucky, then we came here because he got orders from Vietnam. So he dropped me and mom off here, what was then called the secondary by Lake McGarrett, and he went off for a year. He came back in 1968. I finished high school in 1969. Not long after that, I was drafted, and I got called up. And then when I came up, and I really haven't left since. Circumstances, whatever, but I have been here since... Raised my kids here, two of them. One's off in Seattle someplace, doing very well. I have another daughter that's... She's in Denver. This is my wife Lori. This is my second wife. I'll tell people I traded up. My first product was... My first wife was a product of local schools, so I definitely traded up. I come from a background... Where to start? You know, I've been around so long, I was actually... Did some of the survey work when Mackels was being laid out around the golf course. I worked for the engineering firm that did most of the Mackel work for their engineering and survey, Monty Engineering. Went to work for the county where I stayed for 15 years when I was a property appraiser, mapping supervisor. Eventually, I was the county's mapping supervisor, and I was in there when they started their GIS program. So I was involved in that. I was heavily involved in E911 when we instituted it. From there, I went to work for a civil engineering firm up in Warren Beach, where we specialized in civil engineering, land planning, environmental permitting, land surveying, and pretty much anything that we could do to make a buck. I went in there basically as a draftman. When I left, I was a project manager. The city hired me away. From what was then... At that time, when the Planning and Zoning Board were, they saw, okay, we want this guy. So it worked out perfectly. I became a city planner, and I don't really much care for planners, honestly. Would John Lennon say, "Plan is what... Life is what happens to you when you're busy making plans." And you know, planners did the best they could back in 19... Say, say, 2006, 2007. They had five-year plans, and along comes the Great Recession. So the plans went down the toilet. So then we got back together, things got back on their feet, they started making more plans, five-year plans, and along comes COVID. So what can you count on to make plans now? Traffic counts? Well, I don't know anymore. Do people go to work? Do people go to school anymore? You know, school capacity analysis, I've heard that mentioned a couple times. Our school capacity... When we ask the school board, "Do you have the capacity?", they say, "Yes, but do we have enough teachers?" Or are there really that many kids in the school, or how many of them will be taught at home? And so that's interesting. Nah, I was retired for 10 years. After I left the city in 2010, in that 10-year period, I took care of my mother. She was still working. My mother moved in with us. I was her primary caregiver. And now I tell people, two things. One is I kept my promise to my mom. She died in her own bed. And the second thing we did was we raised a German shepherd from puppy to grave before I decided to run for public office. And here I am. My opponent in the election is actually in the room, Brandy White. I wish we had more Brandy Whites. She would make you crazy. She would piss you off, but she does. She is involved. She cares. We need a few dozen more like that. We really do. They are our strength, I see it, because I can't do it by myself, and I was gonna get into that next. What can I or can I not do as a city commissioner? A lot of people don't realize. They think we have powers. You know, we can spend money willy-nilly. We can make things happen. As a commission, we can make things happen. We can set policy. We can spend money. As a city commissioner, I alone can't do a whole lot. On myself, if you need a stop sign, I can get you a stop sign. If you've got a neighbor that's giving you trouble, I can tell you to go to code enforcement. But by myself, I can't do a whole lot. I can stir the pot. Now, one example, I stirred the pot this morning. We came out with a wish list for projects that we sent to Tallahassee for funding, for improvements to our stormwater system and roadway system, so the impacts of Ian won't be as felt as severely next time. One of the things that was near and dear to me, which is Catalina Boulevard between Lake Hellstein Road and Howland Boulevard in District 1. I see that if it's not an emergency route, it should be, because pretty much anybody that wants to go to I-4 has to go down Catalina to get to Howland Boulevard. It was underwater for over a month. That did not make the list. I bleeped. So now it's... The property owners know I bleeped. I let them know I bleeped, and now they're bleeping too. I think that's the voice that will be heard. I can do things like that. I can do things like and look at this park behind me and say, geez, what a terrible waste of space. I know this neighborhood. I knew... I was here before they built it. I know who built it, when they built it, and why they built it, and what it cost to build it. And this is... We've got six tennis courts back there. This is not a tennis court neighborhood. We've got pickleball courts here, maybe some pickleball, but not pickleball neighborhood. I'm thinking maybe a soccer field, maybe more basketball courts, more lighting, something that these people could actually use, because this is not that kind of a neighborhood. It's just not. What else? Somebody prompted me with something. Ask me a question.
Why did I get speed bumps in my neighborhood?
Okay. My sharpest critic, my wife Lori, she wants to know why we can't get speed bumps in our neighborhood. And the reason is because for everybody that wants a speed bump, there's two people that don't. And she wants to slow people down. We own a quiet neighborhood on the other side of Lake Sixma. It's 20 mile speed limit, but we do have some people that go faster. And speed bumps aren't gonna slow them down much. And then she said, "Well, let's get more deputies." I say, "Okay, well, pony up. Let's have some more money. We can get more deputies." But in certain situations, maybe I could get speed bumps depending on the circumstance. So we have a couple in the city off of Cortland Boulevard. There was a sharp right turn, and they want you to slow down before you drive into somebody's living room. And then we have speed humps on some neighborhoods. Which street is the old mill driver on the golf course? It's all windy roads, stuff like that. It's got a lot of curves, and it's sort of speed humps to slow people down there, so they drive off into the woods. Another thing that I can relate to you is a lot of things... One thing I get asked a lot is, "Why are Deltona's lakes or roads so willy-nilly?", like somebody threw spaghetti on the wall. And the answer is it's got to do... The name of Deltona is actually Deltona Lakes. And lakefront property sells more than for not-lakefront property, so they follow the lake shores. A lot of lots backing up the lakes. Lakes went this way. The road went that way. The roads away from that also went that way. Until you ran into a big piece of property nobody owned or somebody else owned, then you got street roads like you do over on Derby Drive, where I lived for a year. For the last 50 years, give or take, 1975, I've lived with either on, within the side of, or within a spitting distance of Lake Sixma. I've been in District 1 since before there was a District 1. I was in District 1 before there was a Howland Boulevard or Providence Boulevard. Yeah, it was just us. I look at some old photos and I wonder. I marvel. When I got here, the population was under 1,200. Now we're up above 95,000. Where are my boards?
They didn't come.
Oh, sugar. I had meant to have two large exhibits that I could bring out for the large crowd to look at while I was setting up. One of them is an aerial photograph of the city of Deltona. Most people do not realize that it's huge. I mean, I've been here for over 50 years, and there are neighborhoods I've never been in. I've lived in District 1 for over 50 years, and I've never been in Mrs. White's neighborhood until we met, and I never had a reason to be. And being this large, there are issues with that also. How do you reach everybody to know that there's something going on? Well, we used to send... The city used to send out mailers with the water bills, but that didn't get to everybody, because a good part of our population is not on Deltona water. They buy their water from Luzon County, so they never got them. But when we're spread out like that, how do you get word out to people to come to events, to come to things like this, to come to city-sponsored events at Dewey-Bostrom Park? You have to see it. It's enormous. And I'll raise another point on that. We... When on the Planning and Zoning Board, where I served for a record length of 14 years, give or take, on and off, one of the things that was presented to us a lot when new projects come in, this planning staff, I mean, what I said about planners, they would be in favor of the project. And one of the phrases, catchphrase was, "It matches the character of the surrounding neighborhood." Well, nobody actually described for me what that neighborhood consists of. Is it the people right next door? Is that the neighborhood? When you do something like that, you have to notify everybody within 300 feet by law. They have to be advertised as they come to the meeting. Is that the neighborhood? Not to me. You throw a dart at the map of Deltona, all 40 square miles, wherever it sticks, chances are I slept there at least once. There are neighborhoods in Deltona that were the houses. There used to be woods where I performed acts. I will not relate to you. And so Deltona to me is all one neighborhood, the old 40. Then there's an issue that's come up about standing, as we mentioned a couple times. Who has standing when a new project comes before the commissioner, before the Planning and Zoning Board? Once again, we go back to... They're holding to the 300 feet, but I don't buy that. If they can three-lane tivity drive, which is miles away from my house, and I don't have to spend an hour following a bus stop, a bus, or a school bus or a trash truck to get from Providence Boulevard to Saxon Boulevard, that's 30 minutes. It should only be a five-minute drive. If they make a project here and make that worse, I have standing, because that slows me down if I want to get to the Deltona Plaza, or to Crunch Gym, or to any place like that. So I look at it a little differently, I think, than most. But then again, I've been here longer than most. Most people can honestly say that they're... Well, most... Ah, ah, ah. They did make it.
Yeah, they had them back.
Just set them up over here, if you would mind, Reuben, so they can see them. They're for your viewing pleasure. One of them is the aerial photograph of the city of Deltona. We put on the backs of boards to save money. These boards are not cheap. As we... As I talk right now, as best I can tell, see, this would be...
Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
You're pulling my line.
Son of a gun.
You get it right there. Thank you.
Feel like I'm back in the band. This would be the Walmart property here, where Super Walmart is, way down here. We are somewhere in the neighborhood of right here. So that's like seven miles, or five miles, give or take. Here's I-4 over here. I live here. So you see all of this? It all looks the same, and I could pick you up here from this neighborhood and drop you here, and it'd look the same. Same houses, same-sized lots, same cars in the yard. It all looks the same. Here is the Butler Chain of Lakes, which created most of the flooding that we have in District 1. Up in here, I mean, it's all... Everything drains this way to a point down here, and then we have a bottleneck down here to get into the river. And there are things... There are questions I may have to answer tonight if you have any. Where's the... The other thing that we brought in was our future land use map. That gets asked sometimes about the future land use map, because there's been some conversation lately about making change to our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan is basically the blueprint of how we want to grow. We look at it every few years. We evaluate ourselves. We grade ourselves. Did we do good? Did we do poorly? If not, we fix this. We did this okay. We gotta do this better. From the comprehensive plan, which says, okay, you should have buffers between residential and commercial property. That's in the comprehensive plan, which leads to the Land Development Code, says, okay, if you're between residential with so many houses per acre, against a commercial site that's got so many square feet per... The area of the site, you have to have a 25-foot buffer or a 20-foot buffer. They actually specified it in detail. They say we have to have so much park land for every 1,000 residents. We more than meet that, but thank God for Lionia Preserve, otherwise we might not. We have beautiful parks in Deltona. I'm gonna throw that out there. We have some world-class parks here in Deltona. And but for the most part, Deltona, as it's laid out in the comprehensive plan, which is, Reuben, is industriously setting up as we speak. The white area that you see in our comprehensive plan, that's the back of it. Wrong side.
By the way.
That confused even me. All the white area that you see there, that are the comprehensive plan, the majority of that is some form of residential, usually low-density residential, which is zero to six units per acre. The red spots you see are the commercial nodes of commercial properties. And there are some other properties that you're not gonna see, and there are PUDs, which are also commercial properties. This is pretty much for the Mackel brothers' original plan, which they submitted to the county back in the early 1970s to develop a master community, a planned urban development. There's not a lot we can do with this, because the houses are where they are. I think we're nearing capacity now as far as build-out on the older units. New houses are coming online. There's been some things lately with this new commission that were... That were being done before that we take pause at now. We really, as a unit, don't much care for 50-foot wide lots. No knock on you, Commissioner King, but the things that happened in the past no longer matter. I wanna go back to... They don't... I don't think that they fit in with the character of my neighborhood. My neighborhood, you can park on your property. My neighborhood, you can keep a boat on your property. You can keep a car. If you drive a work truck, you can park it in your backyard, where people can't get to it. You don't have to park in the street. We have a swale you can park on, which we have on. So the newer stuff, the parking is in the street, and it's scary. I just see in my mind's eye children jumping out between parked cars running into traffic. I see parked cars at night at 3 o'clock in the morning, and there's an emergency way back in the back neighborhood, and EMT has to wind his way back here, find it in the dark, winding between parked cars. It's just... I would like to see things done differently, but then again, that's planning. Planning also follows trends, by the way. Planners, they read magazines. They read books. They go to trade shows. They go to conferences. And they say, "This is how we do it in Portland." They come back and say, "Well, they did this in Portland. It worked real good for them." And they try it out on us sometimes. And we end up with some... At one time, we end up with some stuff that just doesn't make common sense. So one time, you had to put a four-foot-high concrete wall around a parking lot to keep headlights shining into the street. Well, after 10 or 15 years, what do you think those walls look like now? You know, they don't. So bushes is fine, and also green space, more green, less pavement. I'm about to run out of gas here.
I have a question.
Please do.
You were talking about the comprehensive plan, the moratorium. What's going on with...
I don't know. I am unfamiliar with that. Remember, I've only been there since November. We had holidays. There's a lot I have not caught up with. I suppose you probably know more about it than I do, Ms. King.
Well, the moratorium is... It was set up for six months. It was extended because there wasn't a whole lot going on. And I blame the past commission, pretty much, for the fact that nothing was accomplished. We tasked the staff with so many things to do that honestly, there's no way they could get it all done. And we've spent a lot of money, by the way. We spent money to do studies, to figure out how we wanted our city to look, what we wanted it to be. We talked about villages, rather, you know, six villages.
Planners, huh?
And all kinds of stuff. We spent a lot of money. We have... We stopped the building for the purpose of redoing the comprehensive plan so that we could limit or control the kind of development that we wanted in this city. For instance, we currently have a policy that says, in the comprehensive plan, low-density housing is zero to six houses per acre. So that's not working out too well for us. So what we were hoping to do was have a sit-down and say, "Look, let's change this to where low-density housing is zero to two houses per acre."
Ms. King, can I interrupt for just one second, please? I'm with you on this one. There is a... I think that's ridiculous, too. There... The city of Warren Beach is an example, when I was working as an engineer and/ stroke planner. They have what they call a... It's a matrix. And what you do is you don't just say it's a flat rate, four to six. It's a... You have to do a capacity, a holding capacity analysis. Is it in or in or out of the flood zone? If it is, you get so many points. If it's not, or against you. If it is not, you get so many points for you. Does it or does it not have water and sewer, or just water? If it does, you get points. If it doesn't, you take points away. Is it or is it not have sewer? Points on, points away. Does it or does not have hydroric soils, which are soils that don't percolate well, whether it's in the flood zone or not? So you look at soils maps. If it does, you get points away. If it doesn't, you get points taken away. So you end up with this thing that looks like a really... It looks like a jigsaw puzzle. And before computers, these things were nightmares, because computers, you could say, "What's the area of this area right here?", and they'll tell you, "Oh, so many acres, so many square feet." In the old days, it was a little more complicated. You know, these were the days when people were still using slide rules and stuff. But you would come up with, okay, based on a holding capacity analysis, you could have 2.13 acre, 2.13 units per acre. It's based on science. The four to six came straight from the Mackel brothers, and nobody could explain it to me. I'm sorry. Please go on.
So that's what we're hoping for, is low-density, zero to two, medium-density, two to four, and then high-density would be four to six. Another issue that a lot of us are having is the fact that in the comprehensive plan, it allows for the developer to use the gross area or gross boundaries of the property to determine how many acres or how many homes per acre they can put on there. Here's an example. We just did last year the new development down at...
Lake Hellstein, Cortland?
Which one? No, not Cortland.
Lake Hellstein. No, not that one.
No, no, the one down in Osteen, the agricultural land. What was that? Enterprise Osteen, down on Enterprise Osteen Road. Beautiful, pristine agricultural land. And guy bought it. He wants to redevelop it. He wants a rezone for housing development in the middle of an agricultural area with property that butts up against the preserve. So they said, "Well, you know, it's 150 acres, and so we could put in 259 homes because it's 150 acres worth of property." Well, here's the problem with that. 38 acres of it is a lake. 17 acres of it is wetland.
So you can see how a holding capacity analysis would take that into consideration.
And so what they're doing now is they're saying, "Oh, well, we got all of this... We got all this acreage, so we could put in..." And we figured it out, and we're only putting in 4.8 houses per acre.
What does... What was the... Now, the way I understood the moratorium that was in place, broad brush, was that we would allow no more comprehensive plan changes or land use changes or rezoning changes that would increase the current entitled density.
But that's not what happened.
Right, and that's not what happened.
That was what was the...
That was the intention.
Okay.
Not what they actually voted on and was actually...
And you couldn't... A builder couldn't build unless it was 10 houses or less. Was it 10 houses or less?
Originally.
Miss White?
It was over 10 houses. The development was over 10 houses. They couldn't... They couldn't build. They were stopped by the moratorium.
As I said, he knows more about it than I do.
I know, but...
But I will... But I am gonna dig into it.
Right, because my question is, so they extended it, and then they can only extend it till a certain period of time, and nothing, no work has been done on it.
When you say, "No work has been done on it", what... Done on what? What is it? Huh?
On the comprehensive plan.
Ah, the comprehensive.
The comprehensive plan redone so that it can be voted on, it can be discussed, it can move forward, and then we can...
That was brought up in our last workshop. The mayor brought this up, that we need to take a hard look at our comprehensive plan, and we need to take a look at our land development code.
Here's what has to happen, though, in my opinion. What has to happen is, we have to make... Listen, please. We can't...
Go ahead. I don't mind.
We have to make the changes in how many houses per acre, what... We gotta change low-density, mid... medium-density, and high-density before the end of the moratorium.
We don't have time for that.
And we also need to change... And we also need to change the boundaries to be usable property, not gross property.
Okay.
We have... We should see some change before the moratorium ends. Then according to legal, then according to legal, we can add all the things that we want to it to make it better. But right now, we put a moratorium... Heck, we'll be sued soon. We put a moratorium on, and we've stopped everything, but we haven't done anything.
And as a practical... As a practical matter, we could not amend and have the comprehensive plan amended and approved by the State Department of Environmental, Economic, whatever they are, in that length of time. It just is not...
It's happened six months, absolutely. And we've granted an extension.
So when does it expire?
I think there's maybe two, three months left.
That ain't enough time.
Now there's not, but you have the time.
So as a practical matter, what I spoke was true. As a practical matter, it cannot be done before the moratorium runs out.
But that's what happens.
Well, that I can't answer, but I'm still...
It's phased. It hasn't... Nothing's changed.
Well, I think things have changed in the sense that... I will give you the recent example of Fernanda Lending's Phase 3.
And we know about that.
Okay, and you're gonna see... You're going to see... You're going to see more of things like that where we just do not have to say yes if we don't want to. Yes, they are entitled to develop the property per the existing rules, but no, we don't have to give them more than that if we don't want to. But they can sue. They can sue all their what? Okay, you could have 20 units now. Has it zone? We do not have to rezone that for you just because you want to. We don't have to rezone that for you just because you can make money off of it. We know that. I bring... Lauren, I bring that to the table.
Right. Well, I brought it to the table, too, but I got teed up over and over and over again because they made out like that's... Like I was lying, and that...
Well, maybe, perhaps...
If they bring it to the table, it's their property, and they'll sue us if we don't approve it.
The same people... Many of the same people that you're saying are going to sue us know who I am already. They've known me through my county and my private and my city experience. They're not gonna do that to me. But thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I was in a development review for the committee meeting.
I saw you there. Yes.
And so I know that based on the three that they reviewed today, one was approved.
Now, this... What you went to today was the final step in the approval process. That horse left stable months ago.
That's what I mean. So in terms of the existing projects that I guess prior to the moratorium being initiated, at least those projects are working through as well, I was trying to...
Yeah, but prior to the moratorium, they're...
The moratorium's...
For the six months, and it's been extended for another...
I believe another six months.
Six months, I think.
But that's max, and that was...
We're not about to extend.
Reviewing the comprehensive plan?
Reviewing it and doing whatever changes we could make to it.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, can we make this about me once again, please? You chuckle. David, for those of you who do not know, this gentleman in the back, that is David Santiago, former city of Deltona, city commissioner, and former... Luzon County Council? Corporate Luzon County Council, and former state representative in Tallahassee. And he's lived here for a long time, and he's good people, and David speaks truth, so please.
And I think what Lauren says is accurate on the money from the perspective of the work that needs to be done. Because during my campaign time, I said it very clearly, we need to see what we want, put it on paper in the complaint and the instructions, and then follow it, right? So that's where it is. I think the position that prior city commissions have been in, this might be some word of opinion, I'll just say, is that the bar is set, that when you come in and, let's say, fight against a project, the bar is set legally, substantial competent evidence to go against the engineers, the scientists, and those things that get submitted. The commission is the judge of that, right? And that's kind of sort of what... And I'll leave here and make it about you, but I just wanted to throw that out there. And what the former commissioner, King, is accurate, I think, brings, and put it on paper, whatever the rules are, oh.
Well, what David says is true, and part of what this is gonna be about me again. I am the competent, experienced evidence, based on my background. I spent almost 20 years working in civil engineering, planning, environmental permitting, and anything associated with that, and I spent a lot of years working for the property appraiser, and I've lived here forever, so I'm about as competent. And the people that would come to the commission before, they know better. I know most of the players already have for years, and they know they're not gonna bleep me. I'm getting calls... I'm getting calls and meeting with representatives of developers already, and they're, they're coming to see me before they even bring it to the city because they know, okay, we should probably talk to this guy first because if we bring it to the city as we're presenting it, it may not happen at all. And I think that's a good thing. Talk to me, anybody, come talk to me. Brandy came and talked to me, and, you know, we're supposed to hate each other, but we solved the great fish farm mystery, did we not?
And I will say too, in, in review of the development review committee today, they were very adamant to everyone that came to them about it being a one-stop shop. Them giving them the review of what they have and what they need prior to them doing their submittals so that they can seamlessly go through the process and not have to waste money, you know, on things like, for example, the survey for the wetland area or as it pertains to wildlife, making sure that, that it's within the ninety day, you know, expiration period and doing that at a latter part of the project so that they wouldn't waste. So, just hearing them today and their enthusiasm and their encouragement and wanting every potential person that wants to do development here in any regard, for them to be able to talk to them upfront and get all of their...
It's, it's a beautiful thing.
So, I, to see that and be, like I said, new to the city, I could see the congenial, you know, togetherness that they...
Well, and, and we need more of that, and...
And we wanna make sure that we're not gonna waste your money or that the road that, the path that you wanna travel isn't within our...
And I think in the past, the problem has been the commission ignoring that board because the board did do that, and they have done that for a long time. An amazing job, but it was never listened or followed.
So, and...
And I think we're seeing a different pattern, hopefully, now than we've seen previously.
And there, there are some things that, that happened that don't, that probably shouldn't happen. And the result of that is, because you look at your city commission, any city commission, any town, and what you see are laymen. Uh, our last mayor, she was a hairdresser. Uh, he's retired military. Uh, right now, we've got a guy that used to own a bar. Uh, we've got, uh, a woman that owns a remodeling business. We've got a licensed contractor. These are not people well-versed in things like comprehensive plans, land development codes, zoning regulations. So when they get this competent evidence, they get some high-power attorney come before them and say, "This is a great idea." They get sold. And that's not gonna happen on my watch.
No, because we have a team of people that are experts in all the respective fields and what it takes to make those plans and check all of the boxes. So I feel as though, as long as we work together as a team and are able to guide those who wanna do what's...
To...
...to the community, provide town hall forums to educate them about what we're...
You're a force of nature, aren't you?
I'm, I'm here and I'm passionate, my daughter is...
I can tell.
This is our first town hall, so I'm not only privileged, but I'm honored to sit here and listen to you and listen to the residents because I know, my mother being a resident of the city of Deltona, everyone in this neighborhood is her neighbor. And so, I feel personally responsible in my new position to come in, listen and learn and grasp and be able to bring back to the commission and the community and say, "Guess what? There's all this money out there for us to do exactly what we need to do, make our community environmentally...
Uh, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get off your stump, and I'm gonna go back to me again.
Okay.
And another issue that you're dealing with, at least at present time, is you got, out of seven commissioners, you got four rookies. That's a, that's a hell of a turnover. Our planning director just resigned last week, so you don't, we have an interim pla- interim planning director. We are looking for a new city...
He's got a lot of experience.
Who?
He's got a lot, I mean...
Who?
Joe.
All right, never mind. Uh, but he...
I assume he needs an interim, but what I'm saying is that people that are...
I am gonna, I, I, please, lady, ma'am, we're gonna talk about this. Uh, we also have, uh, we're in the process of hiring a new city manager. We're also in the process of hiring, we will be hiring a deputy city manager. We're looking at new attorneys for new law firms now. So, pretty much at city hall right now, it's control, all, delete. We have got to build that team you speak of. We've got to learn to work together, and we've got to, we basically gotta get our act together. Uh, and we gotta start all pulling in, in the same direction if we possibly can. Yes, ma'am?
So, a few questions off of that. We're talking about control, delete, fresh start. So, obviously, not just myself, but other residents concerned is seeing Marcia's name even on the list of, of ability to represent our city considering she's literally in the firm we're firing and is part of, a major part of our history and our problems that we have.
That's only partially true, Brandy, you are correct. But she's not, she does not actually work for Fowler. She's a contr-
She just put in her notice.
She, 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 she's a 1099 employee.
Florida bar, if you look up her stuff.
I, yeah, we have, we have, well, I've, I've got a stack of resumes this time on my desk as we speak. Uh, then, and the, and the price range is run from astronomical to, why would they wanna work here for that kind of money?
But the, to piggyback off of the development issue, one of my questions was the Lake Helen Osteen development that was just started recently. And, um, I know at the time, I believe it was right before the storm, I believe it was Commissioner Sosa at the time had asked them, "How many truckloads of dirt have you brought in to this property?" Because again, we're worried about flooding the neighbors in that area already. And they claimed none, they just moved dirt around. However, I...
Which was true at the time.
It was true at the time. However, I think it's also imperative that the city continues to follow through and follow these developments closely and ask again, maybe now, "How many truckloads of dirt have they brought in?" Because pictures show quite a few truckloads of dirt they brought in.
I'm still waiting to hear from my friend Chris Collier. I have a wacky theory, you wanna hear it? The wacky theory is this. When you go to develop a site, you start with a piece of bare land, and what, first thing you do is you look at the soils map. You, you do. It's available online, paper copies. And you say, "Okay, this soil, it drains real well. It's just sandy soil, it drains well. We can develop this soil, and it's gonna drain just fine. The water's just gonna go straight down into the ground into the aquifer." So what do you do? You bring in a whole bunch of filter, and you put it on top of that good soil. And if you've ever, uh, as the YFC, we have a problem with our soccer fields. Every time we put topsoil on it, a year later, that topsoil's gone down into the dirt. So what you've actually done by doing that is you've changed the characteristics of the existing soil, it no longer percolates as well. I don't think that's being cal-, I don't think that's working in the calculator. And then on top of that soil that you're already changing the, the characteristics of, you're putting a bazillion pounds of concrete, cars, houses, and people. You're compacting it. I've heard a couple of reports of, I've actually seen it with my own eyes, of water from people's yards flowing out over the sidewalk. You get these green slime stains, iron stains on the sidewalk. And that was happening, that water's going down to where it used to go all the way down. Now it's coming down here. We have created unwittingly an artificial barrier. I can't prove it or not, I can't find a soil scientist that'll talk to me. I've talked to DEP, I've talked to St. John's, I've talked to the University of Florida, and they're baffled by me asking the question. How am I supposed to know about it like that? But I think that's true, and so you are right. And like, once again, we're looking at things a lot differently now. We have an expert on board. For at least four more years, unless I kick off first. Mr. Santiago?
I was gonna ask you, from your engineering background. Are those projects, let's just say particularly that one that she mentioned, are they supposed to be designed that their impurges surface calculations and their stormwater retention requirements have the full capacity of that held within your rights?
That, that is, that, that, that is actually true. When you go to the St. John's River Water Management District, get a permit to build a stormwater system, the rules are pretty much simple. You can't let any more water leave your property that was leaving your property before you developed it. So, and, and so that's why when they bring in the filter, they leave big holes for their stormwater retention, and they direct their stormwater attention to those holes we're supposed to filter out. And that is correct, at, at stand alone. Cumulatively, though, I don't think we're actually looking at the cumulative effect of a project here, project here, project here, project here. Even though these projects technically are not in the flood zone, they are in areas where water might traditionally travel overland even though they're not in flood zone. The Parma Drive site is a perfect example. I got involved in that both from the Planning and Zoning Board property side and also as a board member on the Volusia Soil and Water Conservation Board Supervisor. We opined, A, you build a road, the length of that property, water that normally is flowing this way is now running into an artificial dam. It's gonna back up. That was an issue we had. That was, that was stormwater, which is not really soil waters issue, but we, it was in there. Our main concern was, if you build that dam, the water would normally flow downhill, clean water. It's now catching stuff off the roadways, catching stuff out of people's yards, and it's gonna get into the lake nearby, which will flow into the lake south of that, Lake Sixma, which will flow into Lake Dupont, which will flow into Lake Angela, which will flow to the Butler Chain. So we were more concerned about potential to damage the water quality than, than, uh, than flood zones. And so we actually, for the first time in decades, and I made them do it, we actually put together a resolution which we submitted to the city saying, "We object to this project strongly for these reasons." We presented science. And it went to the city commission, and, and the applicant decided to hold it. And the applicant met with us after the meeting, uh, with myself and Dr. Wendy Anderson of Soil and Water Conservation District. And we said, "Well, you know, they, they're pretty much going back to the drawing board because we don't think it's gonna fly the way it was presented the first time." Uh, and another concern we had was they was, there's an existing ditch that flows through there now. They were proposing a wild, it's gonna be a conveyance for the existing water and also a wildlife corridor, but it was gonna be just stormwater drains. So the only wildlife could go through would be a salamander. When you say wildlife corridor, I want something big enough for a bear to walk through. I mean, there's a lot of talk right now, what's gonna happen to El Cam Boulevard. We know, this, this did make the list, El Cam Boulevard. And it is an evacuation route, and it is a major thoroughfare, and it carries a lot of traffic. We know we're gonna have to raise that three or four feet. There's no getting away from that. So the traditional thing to do is just put a bunch of filter down, build a causeway with a bunch of culverts underneath the pipes, the water keep going back and forth. My way of thinking, well, let's spend the extra nickel, if we have it available, and turn it into two things, turn it into an elevated roadway, and instead of just culverts, big box culverts, eight feet tall, that you could paddle a canoe through, or a bear could walk through, or an otter could swim through. You make it something that's multipurpose. So we've got a, we have got an economic development supervisor out that would like now, would, nothing better than to have gondola rides from Lake Sixma down to the Dupont Chain, just going on down through the cr- rivers. You know, canoeing. You don't have to pick up, you don't have to pick your boat up, carry the crossbow, and put it back in, just go right underneath it. So you, you can come at that from both a engineering standpoint to solve the problem, and you can also come at it from a, from an environmental standpoint, which solves more problems, and there's money available for both fronts. Noted? Okay. Uh, Ms. White, anything else? Do you all wanna hear about the great fish farm mystery? Who wants to hear about that?
Mrs. White?
Great fish farm mystery. After Ian, it was reported to me by Mrs. White that people were seeing fish going down the culverts. You know about this, right? Well, as it happens, we think that there was a, a fish farm operating without, without a permit on the Lake Helen side of Deltona off the Kickliner Road. But you can't prove this because it's got an eight-foot-high chain link fence around the whole thing, topped by barbed wire. She's seen it. You can't get into the property. We tried, for both fronts, to get us a, a drone. Well, there are private property issues concerned. Fire department would notice there because they're worried about that. So what eventually ended up happening, much to my delight, I got a heli- helicopter ride. And we flew over that thing, we took some videos, and that, that fish farm didn't need blowout. So the water came from the banks. When that fish farm bank blew out, all that water left that fish farm, carried the fish with it, and now we got tilapia flowing down the streets of Deltona. Now, there's nothing we can do about that because it did not harm the city of Deltona.
I disagree.
Well, it didn't, it didn't tear up our roads, it didn't...
And that, that water, that, that high-powered rushing water busted right through our little barricading and washed out all down over, uh, Lake Helen Osteen Road.
It washed out yards.
It absolutely...
But that did not hurt the city of Deltona. What you're describing is a civil matter between property and their property owner. And that would have to be proven in a court.
The city swell, where they had dug it out and they had put the, the, what should have been, I guess, a weir actually should have been there instead. And the force of that water, because of how much the water actually came at once from it breaking loose, like a dam breaking loose. It destroyed it. I mean, completely uprooted that whole part of the road, uprooted all down those people's property lines. That would be something they would do. But I'm talking about, that's all city property right there. That whole roadway that got jacked up, all city property.
I'm thinking that would be very difficult to prove in a court of law.
It would probably be extremely difficult to prove.
And it's in the Volusia County, so we have no enforcement there. And the mayor of Lake Helen's been made aware, and he's gonna go out and talk to the people. That's about all he can do and say, "Take that and carry your property." And also, I think, uh, some people in the county have now been made aware, he may once again be operating a fish farm without a proper permit because it's being assessed as an agricultural pasture land. The people that originally owned, the people that originally owned the property uh, relocated up to Pearson, Florida, which is an agricultural community, and they are now selling caviar all over the world. They're growing fish in large tanks as aquaculture operation. Those are the people that originally owned that property.
They left behind, dead.
Yeah, and it's now owned by out of, out of city of pro- that is owned by people that live on the coast. So it's, we're kinda stuck on that one. But we did solve the mystery. I need more Brandy Whites.
They were, they were out there catching fish and wandering, that's what they wanted.
I would too, except tilapia aren't worth, tilapia just don't make good eating.
There was bass, there was totally different types of fish.
There was an article, um, in the Beacon, I happen to know, we know the people that were interviewed, but it was like, let's put a little, like, a lighthearted spin on all the devastation, all the negative about the hurricanes. They had the kids were out there, they were fishing, they were having a grand old time. They were having fun, you know?
Didn't they poke for it to a lake nearby too?
So it's...
If you just, it, gravity, David, it went wherever it wanted to go.
It, it went over Captain, right, and it went down White Morse area. So there is a small lake back there that is in overflow. It's always been an overflow type thing. But the problem is, with that rushing water, it tore up everything on its way down there and then flooded up over Lake Helen Osteen into the, the sister lakes. So it's just kind of like...
Lakes with tilapia in it, what you're saying?
Right, more than just tilapia. There was at least six or seven different types of fish they were...
Okay, back on track, ladies and gentlemen. Um, this is, this is fun.
They will be out there now with a fishing boat. Their vehicle will be parked in front of a no parking sign, and they'll be standing next to the no trespassing sign.
Do we have...
They're behind white horse, you can't miss them.
Do, do we have any, does anybody here have any, knowing how limited my powers are, actually, Do, do we have any, does anybody here have any, knowing how limited my powers are actually, as an individual commissioner, is there anybody here that, that has anything that I can do for them in, in the short?
We have a, I've been contacted by some friends of ours that live back up on Center and, uh, they either come, they either, they either come in or out on Center off of Howland or Lake Tiny on the Lake Helen Osteen Road and they're now missing a sign, a street sign on Howland.
Send me an email, I'll get that fixed.
On Lake Helen Osteen Road.
On Lake Tiny.
I have, I have, I have made an admission of mine, among other things, to drive every street in District One. I'm going down all of them, I wanna see them, I wanna, again, it goes back to neighbors, all looks the same, you can't, it's easy to get lost. Uh, and in the process, I did find places where street signs and stop signs are missing and I let Glenn, Glenn Whitcomb, our public works director, know and those signs were replaced fairly promptly. If you know of a site, just email me, I'll forward it on, actually, well, no, you better go through me. I don't care who you are, you're a former city commissioner, you, you don't just have, you just don't have a [INAUDIBLE]. Go to me first, that way I know and that it got done.
Well, she came to me and asked me, and I didn't know who she's.
And, uh.
It's actually a Lake Tiny sign.
There's a.
Like Tiny Road.
Uh, well, if we've been here almost an hour and this poor gentleman, he's ready to go, and, and anything else? David, Mrs. Santiago?
Thank you for having me for this meeting, but, you know, I, I wanted to add this because it's important because I, I've had the privilege of, of dealing, uh, not only the local level, citywide, the countywide level and the statewide level and, 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 and I, I'll talk to Brandy and Lauren because they've kind of been in the, in the front lines for a lot of this stuff that we talked about today. And I can assure you of the fact that, um, Deltona is not an easy city to do, uh, and I'm not defending it, I just wanna give you the information, to do development business in. We are known as one of the most difficult ones in the region and a lot of that's afforded by your effort. I'm not saying in a bad way, I'm just saying you've affected change, right? As a constituent now, I think that's good and I think what we need to do, what our commissioners need to do in conjunction with others is how will we, we morph that reputation and outreach so that we bring the type of stuff that we still want, because unfortunately, the, the, the reputation does hold us back in other areas, good, bad or different, I just want you to know that, because I talked to people from all over state.
Da- David, I can address some of that, well, when I was.
You can put a change, you can put a change.
When I was on the Planning and Zoning Board, I got hired by the city, I came in as a planning manager, eventually ended up being the acting director there. I'm not unknown to the development community out there, after all those years, and there was a collective sigh of relief because they saw somebody in me, even though it said planner of my time. Me off, I've seen planners sit around and discuss at nauseam, well, in this contract, do we use the word shall or do we use the word will? And the whole time, I know there's some guy out there tobacco making fifty bucks an hour with his thumb up, because they can't decide. So when I got hired in the city, I got phone calls and text messages from land use attorneys, developers, engineers saying, thank God, we've got somebody there that actually knows the realities of profits, losses and also knows the city and what the city wants. I was perfectly placed, well, for, until the Great Recession, honest Christ, I thought I was in the place God meant me to be doing what I was supposed to be doing as best I could for the people I should have been doing it for. And then we had the Great Recession and everything went to hell. Uh, my job, when you look at why I left, if you look at my unemployment papers, it says I left basically because of lack of work. My job was to oversee all new projects coming in, nothing was coming through the door, I just, nothing to do. It worked out fine, I got to take care of my own, raise a puppy, right? Um, closing comments, I have none, I don't wanna hear anymore from you, not tonight. Well, she's a, I know, she, she, she's used to dealing with, yeah, I can, yeah, she knows, she's, she's.
She's dealing with.
Uh, well.
You didn't have to be about myself.
Oh, that's not your meeting, but I'm gonna find out all about you, but I, so, so far, I'm very impressed. You do seem to have your, uh, a passion for this and you, I.
If you could find out my background, you'll be really amazed for a wonder while.
You read mine, you should be amazed also.
I am, I, I took all of them.
That's only half of it, yeah, there's those unspeakable accents, I was speaking of early in the, it used to be the woods here. So, um, uh, now, those, in the basket back there, I expected a few more people. Those flash drives I have on there, the first ten years of our history, it's, it's every newsletter that Deltona Corporation ever sent to property, any, for every property for the ten years that they were here. Uh, there's a couple flyers back there that I put together on my own time and the advantage of working for the city is they got a better printer than I do, so I print them out, I'm trying to populate a mailing list, I've been working through Facebook where I can get these, where I can send these things out to everybody, I'm not adept at that. I just found out today that BCC means blind carbon copy, because I thought that's an awful long list of names, but it turns out I don't have to produce the whole list of names, and so I'm up to about twenty people. So take one of these things, we take a couple flyers with you, and if you know of anybody that would like to be included in this, uh, or even would like to be, just give me their email address, send it to me, uh, or, and, or just whatever and I will include them and I'm populating this list as I go along, when somebody complains, they're on the list. Uh, because then they're gonna get a flyer, uh, but one of the complaints that we've had is that our commission doesn't listen, that's not gonna be, I really have nothing better to do. On that, I'm done, thank you so much for coming out, help yourself to the freebies on your way out, everybody be safe, enjoy your evening. Thank you for coming out, Miss King, Miss Santiago, special thanks to you.